Okay, we'll call the end order. First of all, I would like to say that this morning I came in and I filed a felony charge against Joan Misuse of entrusted property, proper management, and use of the city's credit card, and giving herself unauthorized additional health insurance policy without commission approval. What we need to do is we need to set up a meeting. We have ten days to set up a meeting to give her an opportunity to speak in her own defense.
I guess I'm confused why your decision would affect the rest of us. I guess we didn't approve that.
It's if you would look at the Century Code.
Yeah, I did look at it.
It's in here.
I've looked at Century Code.
Well, here, I got one for everybody. Well, you can read what the Century Code says.
Yeah, I've already read it.
You did?
Yeah.
Really?
But the thing about it is, is, you know, we've already went through Human Resources, and whether it's insurance or anything else, it's already been through Human Resources. And if there was another issue, that should have also went through the Commission on Human Resources. Now, now, we're covered with a blanket over a decision you made.
If I may read, um, let's see, it says, okay, uh, North Dakota Century Code forty dash fifteen dash oh seven, appointment of officers to be removed upon hearing suspension, employment, and removal of temporary officer. Any person appointed to any office of the city under the commission system of government and any employee of the city may be removed by majority vote of all the members of the Board of City Commissioners, but no officer or employee shall be removed except for cause and unless charges are preferred against the person and the person is accorded an opportunity to be heard in the person's own defense within ten days after charges are filed against any such person in the office of the city auditor, as the board shall proceed to hear and determine the case upon its merits. The president of the Board of City Commissioners and/or the board by majority vote of its members may suspend any officer or employee against whom charges have been preferred until the disposition of charges. The president may appoint a person to fill a vacancy temporarily until charges against the incumbent. Also, if offices have been spooled of any person appointed by the president, without confirmation, may be removed by the president when the president sees it is for the best interest of the city.
Okay, well, where does that stay if the president of the commission could do this without commission approval? We've hashed all this.
Well, I have. Really? We haven't talked about the credit cards.
We've went through this a year ago.
We haven't talked about the credit cards. Anyway, this is...
Quite honestly, we need to, we need to let it go. I mean...
Well, I knew any charges had been let out. We need to set up a meeting.
Well, I, I disagree.
Well, that's...
I, I honestly, I honestly move that we throw the letter out, and...
I don't think you can do that.
I don't think you can do this.
I, I, yes, I can.
Can a motion be made to ask the president to decide to resign?
I move that we take a vote on whether the commission approves and accepts this letter.
I'll second that for discussion.
I just don't understand how we keep bringing this stuff up and why it keeps, it blankets the rest of us, Larry. You know, at some point, we gotta let this stuff go.
You know, um...
I didn't get on this commission to keep talking about this.
Since the president of the Board of City Commissioners will be the executive officer of the city, since all laws of the city are enforced, okay? That's, you know, for you and I know eight, so...
Because I know, Human Resources, we got together and, you know, there were some things that we wanted to improve. We got together with Jo, with Joan. They were approved.
You know, you, you, for the whole last year, you guys have been saying that, you know, you're gonna get rid of the second insurance policy. For a whole year, and you've done nothing.
And we are going to make a motion at this meeting, because we came up with an agreement with Joan. I'm not sure what else you, what you want us to do.
Well, mine, uh...
So, because we didn't get rid of the second insurance policy, we have this letter.
Uh, this is like proper math, and use of the city's credit cards also is on that.
Five to ten years ago.
Five to ten years ago?
And when it happened, it was immediately repaid.
Doesn't mean anything. It doesn't matter if it's repaid or not. You know, what, Mackenzie County Sheriff, he repaid his too.
But there, there can be a mistake here or there. I mean...
Mistake here or there, there's four pages of stuff there.
Four pages?
Well, you know, I gave it to you, buddy.
So, Larry, I have a question, and, uh, because we, we went over this last year. I was new to the commission, and we...
Charges were never brought up against Joan on that. It was just my concern.
But it was brought up.
But we still talked as a commission about the process of agreements or how we would handle that, and it clearly states, and we would go through step by step. We talked about the review process on an employee. Is anything documented? Have you done a point-to-point? Have you done a verbal warning, written warning? Have you gone to the commission? There's a, you know, your first step is talk with the auditor administrator, and if you can't get that satisfied, then you talk to the city commission. I mean, we had agreed that we would follow those processes too. So, it just seems like it's, it's very personal. You didn't go through any type of process to include the commission.
You know, um...
Is there anything in personnel reviews that dictate that this has been a problem in the last year?
You know, if you go section forty sixteen dash fourteen, auditor not to co-mingle city money violation forfeits office, that's basically, you know, using the city's credit card, um, you know, to the extent that was used, so... It's, it's my job to see that the laws are followed, and, you know, and if I don't bring this up, then I, I feel I'm guilty of not doing, not doing this.
I wasn't the auditor when these happened.
You were deputy auditor?
But I wasn't the auditor.
Oh, auditor, deputy auditor? Still, same, so...
If I may interject briefly, and obviously, I'll seek the approval of the commission to speak, but I'll explain my purpose. My name is Justin Binjean, attorney from Bismarck. Joan has hired me to represent her in this case, and I'd just like to briefly speak on her behalf. And so, if I may, I'll be, I'll be quick. She visited with me a year ago when the insurance policy issue was discussed, and it just seems like a real unfortunate situation there, but it also seems as though that was allowed to continue and that now it's being resolved. My own perspective, and of course, I'm here representing Joan, is that...
Well, nothing is resolved, but go ahead.
My, my own perspective, of course, here as an advocate, I don't see that as a misapplication of entrusted property, which is what is being charged here, at least the charges are being proposed. Now, there's been a comparison drawn with the Mackenzie County Sheriff, and I'm fairly familiar with that case, although I don't have any personal involvement in that. An issue in that particular case is, of course, that this person is accused of traveling down to Las Vegas using a county or a governmental credit card paper convertible for him and his wife while he was there, a rental vehicle. And I believe, I may be speaking out of school, but for some golfing or some extracurricular type things, it had absolutely nothing to do with the, the work that he was there to do. It's also my understanding that when the sheriff was approached with these discrepancies and asked to repay it, he said, "No, I'm not gonna do that." And that's really why...
Well, I, we don't know that, though. I mean, you know, that's the review of it, I guess.
Sure, of course, but I'm here as an advocate, and I'd like to continue speaking, if I may. You can certainly critique what I tell you after. So, you, you can take those things as they are, and obviously, no single person here is involved in that case. I happen to have a little bit of insight into it, and the other, the other thing, of course, too, to keep in mind, so, if I recall correctly, I think he may be charged with a misdemeanor, and under North Dakota law, basically, if a crime is committed, there's two years in which to charge somebody if it's a misdemeanor. If it's a felony, it's three years. And so, if we're talking about things that are alleged to have happened five, ten years ago, well, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a crime anymore at this point, and it's, you know, to, to reference...
But I don't think 2015 is five years ago.
Okay, well, obviously, I, I don't have the materials that you have supplied.
Well, and that's why I wanna have this hearing, is so that, you know, I'm passing out materials that anybody will see, and that's why I wanna have this hearing. And that's where they should be discussed, so...
Sure, and then the, actually, the, the way that I read the statute, the one that you all should have in front of you, forty dash fifteen dash oh seven, it, it talks about if charges have been preferred, okay, and that's, unless, unless charges are preferred against the person. And so, that, that's kind of archaic language, but if charges are preferred, what does that mean? That means that the commission chooses to institute some kind of an action against, in this particular case, Joan. And so, my suggestion, my argument, is that the discussion that you'll have right now, again, this is my opinion, my interpretation of the law, is whether or not the commission votes to move forward with charges, and then, at some point in the future, she would be allowed an opportunity to defend herself at a hearing. The other thing that is my understanding, and again, I haven't been involved in this matter here for very long, it's my understanding that Joan is about to go on medical leave very shortly, and so, I do note that, looking at the, the Century Code itself, I have it right in front of me, a person in Joan's position who may be accused of something like this, she's entitled to the same due process rights as somebody who is going to be put on trial, you know?
Well, exactly, and that's why she had, we would wanna have this hearing. And it says, "Within ten days after charges are filed against any such person in the office, in, in the office of the city auditor," which was, "The board shall proceed to hear and determine the case on its merits." So...
Sure, but due process...
I mean, that's following the process according to Century Code, so...
Well, the due process, the thing you have to understand is that due process is not meant to be used to kneecap people, okay? And so, due process is a way to ensure that somebody is given a fair hearing, and to time it so that this occurs when Joan is going to be out on sick leave.
I, I knew nothing about that.
Certainly, but that would be, that would be offensive to due process, and I, I don't think that, on an appeal-type situation, I don't think a decision like that would be upheld, and so, that would be, again, my statement as an advocate for Joan, but also a word of caution, I don't think that it would be appropriate in the event that the commission, A, chooses to move forward with this, and B, it would be held when she has planned sick leave.
Like I said, I have nothing informed about, so I don't know anything about it, so...
Well, I'm certainly not making an accusation. I guess that, that would summarize what I have to say. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your input.
And as far as Human Resources goes, I mean, Joan's been pretty transparent with us. She told us we didn't see an issue. I think the issue's dead.
Agreed, and I thought it was dead last year when we talked about this. This legal document, is this through an attorney?
Nope.
Is it just your...
It went off Century Code.
My opinion is, is that it's time to change the culture here. It's time to make sure that people feel comfortable in their work, work environment, and the problem is, is we do so many good things in the city, and then one thing like this throws it all up, you know? Enough, enough.
Then why don't we just have our hearing, and then you can, it'll be over?
We've, we've already got the motion and the second one.
What was the motion?
Had we throw this out? Is that correct?
Yep.
It's clear to do that. Can they do that?
That is my opinion, but again, I'm here as a representative of Joan, and not, not of the commission, but the way that...
Well, is, is it a civil suit, or is it a suit with the city against Joan? Because if it's a city against Joan, then the commission has to make a vote on it.
It's a claim, it's a claim cause. I claim cause and make the following charges against Joan.
But are you doing it, are you doing it as the mayor, or are you doing it as a civil person?
No, I'm doing it as a president of the city commission.
Then you, then you're being the whole commission.
Yeah, then you're not representing me.
Yes, right.
Unless...
Ray has hand up, I call him, Ray.
As a, as a citizen and as a former commissioner, and one of the commissioners that hired Joan Zimmerman, ever since that time, Larry, when you threatened if she was hired, you were gonna quit, and then you quit, you've had a chip on your shoulder ever since that happened. Now, I'm gonna tell you one thing...
You know what, Ray? You know what, Ray?
Larry, Ray's speak.
You gave me the floor.
All right, go ahead.
So, if you're gonna go by all this hoile and schmoile, I've got the floor, and I'll tell you this.
Don't, don't get worried, Ray.
If you got a chip on your shoulder...
Hey, settle down.
If you have a chip on your shoulder, it means there are a little more wood further up, and that's all I got to say.
I don't have a chip on my shoulder. When I got on the city commission, things were even. One of the very first meetings I was at, I asked, we had the bills, and I asked, "Where is, where is page four of the credit card bill?" And Joan goes, "Well, I must have forgot to, you know, put that in here." So, I went in the next day. Which one did you forget? It was one where her husband had used the credit card to charge a room in Minneapolis. And I, I really don't think that was just accidentally forgotten.
Well, it was kind of like when you'd use your pickup to go to Bismarck shop and take the water with you, and then charge the city mileage. What about that?
What?
Yeah, when you worked here. You'd haul the water sample down, and then go shopping, and then come back and charge the city mileage. Get real, Larry. Grow up!
No, you grow up.
I know you won't grow up.
You grow up.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna talk to this attorney...
Good.
Because you wrote filth on the wall about Joan when you were an employee here...
What?
And I have a witness and a picture of what you wrote.
I did, never, I never...
Oh, you're a damn liar.
You're a liar, right?
Okay, can, can we interject from someone that really wasn't a part of it during that period of time and doesn't care? Let's worry about what we have now, and let's forget about the past, okay? Let's make it a good working environment, and let's be positive with everything. But the problem is, though, is we can say that, but we gotta carry through with it. And quite honestly, you know, I don't wanna see this come before the commission again.
But then let's have our hearing, and it'll be done.
We're dealing with it right now. Yes?
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. You know, I get out into the community a lot, and I spend a lot of time talking to the people of the community, and, you know, the sense I get from the city of Washburn is, we just wanna move on. I mean, we, we want this to be done with. It seems like, over the last year and a half, Commissioner Thomas has spent more time on a personal vendetta against auditor Zimmerman.
That's your, that's your opinion.
That, yes, that is my opinion, but that is something that has been discussed up and down the streets of Washburn for a year and a half now.
Like, what has been? What has been?
Yeah, really.
Just the...
The insurance?
No, the overall action of the city commission.
What about the credit card and the insurance, I mean?
The credit cards have never been brought up before, until today.
I am just speaking upon behalf of, we were talking about the city commission.
That last meeting we had, when this all happened, it was just the insurance.
It was just the insurance.
We talked about it, passion all up, and we decided...
Well, I had, I had mentioned it.
We just like it, be done, to move on.
Well, then let's have our hearing and move on.
I would too, I'm with you, but in the same fact, if you had your job, and you had your credit, your job's credit card, and you went out and were spending like this, what would your job say to you?
I don't have a PhD credit card. I use my own card.
I'm just saying, what do you suppose they would say if you were using their personal credit card, a business credit card, to go out and for your own personal use? What would your job say?
I can't speak for that, because I...
Can I explain myself?
That's the only problem I have, and it's, it's, you know, I mean, if anybody else's job, and you had a person that, the company credit card, and you went out for personal use, that's where the downfall of this is coming right now. That's the bad part. If it was for city use, I mean, you know, it's a different story.
And I will say this, yet, is, Joel and I, Human Resources, have sat down with Joan and have discussed this, and we thought...
The credit cards?
Yes, and we thought it was behind us.
Okay, then why didn't you come back to the rest of us and tell you discussed this?
Because it was a Human Resources, it was one of those things, just like some of the other...
So, we're, we're commissioned. You, anything with Human Resources should come back to us, right?
I guess, yeah, probably should have, you know? When we brought it up, we wanted to make sure that it was taken care of, and she brought it up, actually, and we discussed it, and it was all paid back.
I understand the, the fact that it, you know, got paid back, and that...
And immediately, it was paid back.
But the fact is that it was still used, you know what I mean?
No one's saying that.
And nobody has, you know, nobody's ever caught this.
Yeah, then that's...
That's the bad part, I mean, you know?
But who approves all the financials? So, we're all looking at this together.
Well, you know, you know, when I got on the commission, you know how they approve financials? They never even looked at a bill, they just had a sheet of paper, and like, "We already paid these," I said, "Okay."
Oh, no.
Well, that's not true.
That's all that I know.
I was on the election before you, and we...
That's not true.
If we're gonna talk about accountability, then I, I think this commission's accountable to, to approving these in the first place, and how long have you known about this could be your next question, because if you have known about it, then there's some negligence there.
I researched the credit card laws a month or two, or a couple of months ago, I suppose it was.
So, why didn't you bring it up then?
I'm bringing it up now.
Okay, again, like I said, once we're through with this, I want it to be through, because I'm on Human Resources, and obviously, I deal with the employees and that, and it needs to stop. You know, otherwise, I'm responsible, I'm being negligent for letting it go on.
Well, like I said, let's have our hearing, you know, and then...
I think we, we just need to have our vote and get it over with.
Like I said, I don't know if, if, you know, once the charges have been made, I don't know if you can throw that out, because it wasn't made by you.
Well, again, speaking as an advocate here, but I, I disagree with his interpretation of the law. The way that I read it, and it's specifically, it's the first sentence, and it talks about how any city employee can be removed, and then we have a comma, "But no officer or employee shall be removed except for cause and unless charges are preferred against the person, and then, and, the person is accorded an opportunity to be heard in the person's own defense."
And that's what we're doing.
Okay, please don't interrupt me. What, what that tells me is that the, the commission is the initial gatekeeper as to whether or not charges are preferred, and this even moves on to a hearing. And what I would suggest, I, I'm thinking that if, if there was some kind of impropriety with the credit card or a suspicion of it, it may simply be best for the entire commission to look at it and to decide as a body, and not just as what, what sounds to me like kind of a fractured entity to decide what to do about it. And it, it sounds as though these credit cards, that there is some oversight or monitoring, and it may be helpful to discuss that with the folks who do that as well. But in any case, the commission does have the ability to vote not to proceed with a hearing like this, but what's to, what's to prevent the commission from actually looking at this, instead of bringing it to some sort of an old-blown adversarial hearing that apparently must be held when Joan is out on sick leave, which really, I, I think that any person would agree that that doesn't sound fair. That doesn't sound like due process of the law to get somebody when they're down.
I'm gonna have to read it the way you read it. Says, "But no officer in place shall be removed except for cause and unless charges are preferred," which they were, "against the person or persons." You know, and then, "And then accorded an opportunity to be heard in her own defense within ten days, within ten days after charges, charges are filed against any such person, the board shall proceed to hear and determine the case on its merits." And then it says, um, where is it? That would be ten days.
That should be for the benefit of the person that has the complaint against them. You know, we shouldn't have to have the meeting to say that it's okay for you to go along with that. That should be taken care of. If we don't agree with, with this, we shouldn't be pressing charges or, or anything like that without us agreeing.
You know, and then it says, "The board shall proceed to hear and determine the case on its merits." Well, you haven't read anything that I, that I got here, so how can you even make a determination like that?
What do you mean, read what you've gotten?
All the stuff I presented with you, to you.
I've looked at it all.
Really? You've read all of it?
If I may, one more time, just in, in thinking about the mechanics of this statute that we've been talking about, under this interpretation, if one commission member wishes to file charges or prefer charges against somebody, that's very serious accusation. And so, the moment that one commissioner makes an accusation like this, then that, if you take his interpretation, that means you're all in. That means that this person has to go to a hearing and defend herself, and that doesn't seem to be the way that a commission is designed to run. So, again, my two cents, and I don't think that his interpretation of the statute holds up with the language of it, and so, I, I suggest that you do have the authority to vote whether to proceed on this.
Yeah, the idea that it's a legacy item, and we talked about this, I know the credit cards weren't brought up last year, but we talked about the insurance last year, and that you're bringing it up again. It seems like it's a very personal area, and it's personal, because, I know it is, because you didn't include the commission in this, you just, you drafted your letter of charge. I think that's not with the culture Keith is talking about. You know, I signed up for the commission to be a rep for this, the residents here, and I could be at home giving a bath to a little kid, I don't have time for this, to be honest with you. I think it's clearly personal, I do not support it. It's a legacy item, and it's borderline harassment. You drug this out for a year, I don't, I personally don't agree.
It's gotta be over.
So, you, so you don't have a problem with somebody hitting themselves an extra insurance policy without commission approval, even though it says right in there, um, "Under the duties of the auditor, present communications to present to the governing body for its consideration at its next meeting, all communications, claims, and other matters filed in the city auditor's office." Joan never did that.
Which claim? Because we talked about this last year.
We never talked about that. We, you know, she, you know, she said, she said, what she said, what she said last year was, you know, I mentioned it to Keith, and, and, you know, she also said, you know, if you can't read it when the bills come in, no. What she said last year was, you know, I mentioned it to Keith, and, and you know, she also said, you know, if you can't read it when the bills come in, no, too bad.
I, I did not say it that way.
Well, not that way, but basically that's what I was-
I have been nothing but respectful to you all times.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I have.
So I'm requesting a hearing.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, what's your motion again?
Uh, what did we have written down there?
A motion to take a vote on whether or not the commission approves the letter written by Commissioner Thomas.
Good. Keith?
Are we gonna vote on it?
Yeah.
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Keith?
You're just gonna, you two is ruin your own deal, to throw it out.
Yeah, we're, we're, I motion that we are not going to do all-
Nay.
No?
Aye.
No. Well, I'll be checking with, uh, our attorney and, um, also probably the state's attorney on this, so, um, you know.
The, the one thing I'm gonna say as far as human resources is concerned, if we don't get this under control in here pretty soon, we're gonna get harassment charges on us. I don't want a part of that, and just like you said, I could be home playing with my son, I don't need to try to figure out old axes to grind.
You know, people need to know what's going on around here.
Let's let it go.
So, you know, um, and why you can't see that, I mean, I guess I don't understand it, but. And move on then. Hold on a minute. May twenty-second amended minutes.
I move that we accept the May twenty-second amended minutes.
We have second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on those? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Hold on a minute, June twelve.
I move to accept the minutes on June twelfth.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? I thought I had some, but I don't think I marked it just a second. Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Well, yes. Financials? Take over from the last meeting?
Is there something we were taking out of, or we were holding up?
The check, right?
Those are the bills.
Okay.
Check was very complicated, so it's a problem. I move that we approve the May financials.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Keith?
Aye.
Uh, Reese?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Yes. Washburn School banners, you know, I'm right one, I'm building one.
Um.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I surprised you, Jen.
That's what I got, Washburn Public School banners on my house.
You know, but I, I think you changed the-
Mr. Rannus isn't here, so we can move on.
Can you kind of explain it?
Um, I had a very brief discussion, who would like to put banners on the poles by the school, on the light poles? Kind of like the historic Washburn banners, but I'm not, I haven't seen a design or a way to do it.
We just have to okay it?
He's just wondering if it was, if it was going to be okay for them to put them up on the light poles, and-
I know a lot of schools that would, community do, it looks nice.
Just something with the school, just saying Washburn School, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, Washburn Cardinal.
I think that would've been nice.
Yeah, I agree.
But I guess we can wait until he shows us something? Boy, health insurance?
Okay, I guess Noel and I met about this, and what we discussed is that we would just keep the, pretty much the same policy, or recommend to keep the same policy, and then also, um, we talked about Joan's health insurance, and we talked about a, we can't do a health savings account, which you would use it for health purposes, because of the policy we're under, uh, so we would have to do, you know, something either flex plan or a, or something in the paycheck, but what was that amount?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six hundred, and what, the reason we came up with that amount, it would be the amount of the deductible, um, and then that amount would be changed in, so in other words, if we have a, two people that are married, one person gets a family policy, and so the other person gets something, we would recommend that the other person would get thirty-six hundred dollars to help cover uh, the deductible of the policy, and we would change that into, in our policy manual.
Isn't the deductible only twenty-two hundred dollars?
Pretty sure the-
What was the, what was the reason for that?
That was the, the out-of-pocket.
Out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket match, thirty-six hundred.
Well, it says out, is the Comp One Hundred Plan, is that what it is? Well, then it's out-of-pocket match is twenty-two hundred.
Oh, I'm, we must have opened up the wrong one.
It was in a prior email before I got it done.
Yeah, whatever the out-of-pocket amount would be for our policy.
Maybe they've changed-
Do you know what I mean?
Numbered.
I thought it was like thirty-two fifty max out-of-pocket for a family.
Okay.
I'm not certain, I don't know if they found me.
So anyway, that's the amount we would recommend? And again, that wouldn't change with the policy, that would be, that number would be in our, um, employee commandment. So if there's ever a second, um, person on the, as far as a married couple, one person would get a family, and then so they would get some benefit, the other person would get the deductible, which would be thirty-two fifty if that's the case.
And then there'd be no longer a single policy involved.
Does somebody wanna second that for discussion sake?
I'll second.
Okay, um, I, I, I guess I just don't get it, because you, the city says you get health insurance, it doesn't say you each get your own health insurance. If they each, one, their own health insurance, and they should each get a single policy.
What if they have children?
Then one can get a single plus dependent. Um, but a family plan, you know, they're, they're both covered under a family plan, right? This is just wrong, I mean, you tell me anywhere else that, that would do this, you know, the city has some of the best benefits out there, and wow, this is just going way, way, way beyond. It should be, if you're married, you get a family plan and that's it.
Well, is that written anywhere?
Is what written?
That yours, the stipulation you're talking about?
No.
Because they're afforded insurance, each their own, they're still only, they're city employees separate. So where, where does it say where it has to be single policies, you know?
The, the, the manual says you will get insurance, um, when you become a full-time employee.
But it doesn't say that it has to be this.
Doesn't say everybody gets their own plan. You know, it does not say that.
It is, it is, it is part of the benefit package that the city offers employees, so if I was not here and there was another, another auditor here, you would have two family policies, you know, if Kim was still here. So, as part of that benefit package, I've received nothing. And so the other employees have those, those added benefits that come with the job that, that they're doing. And as far as my situation, if I did not take the, the insurance, then, you know, I'm a, I, I don't, I'm not receiving that same benefit package that is afforded everybody else.
Actually, you are, because you have health insurance. What about, what about the single person that, you know, that's like saying, well, the single person is, you know, a thousand dollars less, they should get a thousand more dollars, because everybody else gets a, you know, higher costing insurance policy, and it doesn't work that way either.
Yeah, but that's why we're here, so it's all process, right?
I know, but-
If you see a, a kink, you, you make it better for next time, so why aren't we stipulating that with this type of situation, we don't allow that going forward? If it's not in there to state that clearly, then I think we're spinning our wheels here, why aren't we making it better? Why aren't we putting that very clearly so we don't redo this next year, that's-
Well, I was under the understanding that, you know, our, Noel and Keith were going to, to take care of that, because I was going to do it several times, but I kept, Noel kept saying, no, just wait, switch where you're taking it.
Did you, did you just hear what I just said, that we did take care of that? That's why we're here.
It's like been a whole year, so.
Well, I-
We took care of it.
I would also like to say on my own behalf, again, that this was not done with malice, it was not done to take away from the city as the, um, the health, the insurance po- or the policy reads. Um, I believe I could have taken out a second family policy, and I did not, because I did not feel that that was fair to the city. And, um, the city maintains, uh, my top priority, and, um, I, I absolutely had no intention that, to cause harm to the city by, by any stretch. And so I, I just wanted to say that again, that that was, that is not the case.
Well, then it should have been brought up to the city commission at the time, you know, rather than just taking it, because-
I, I did not just take it, Commissioner Thomas.
So Noel-
We didn't inform the commission, so yeah.
So Noel and I met, and anyway, whether we agree or not, we're gonna have to discuss it, and obviously, but this is the compromise we came up with.
So with that compromise, then it's going to be clearly written that what has happened no longer can happen?
If we accept it, there would be no longer a second policy for the second, um, married couple family. It would be just a certain amount, which would be thirteen, thirty-two fifty if that's the case, and it would not change, that amount would not change.
What do you mean thirty-two fifty?
Okay, Noel, I'm not, I don't wanna, but we've heard three different numbers now.
Yeah.
And if we're on the Comp Choice One Hundred Plan, and out-of-pocket family is twenty-two hundred, so we got twenty-two hundred, we got thirty-six hundred, and now we got thirty-two fifty, so-
Well, whatever the deductible, out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket deductible is, that's where it would be, we can even write that in, whatever that out-of-pocket deductible is. He's, she's gonna check on it.
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying, we, we got three different numbers here, it'll-
Because you would rate it that it's the out-of-pocket deductible, because the number will always-
No, the num- no, the number will stay the same.
So each benefit's that.
But the plan?
The, the- Every year, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it can change with the number more.
So we got insurance for you, I'm guessing?
Nope.
Oh, okay, so what-
I voted it this year.
Oh, okay.
With the different company.
So what does it cost for a, uh, a month for the, for the single and for the family? Per month, what does it cost the employee?
It's like five ninety for a single and seventeen seventy-four.
Well, I could cost the city, is that what you mean?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the out-of-pocket, like, for example, if they go to the doctor, they have surgery, whatever else, that'd be the max that they'd have to pay.
No, you, he's talking monthly, I'm talking monthly what it costs, right?
Yeah.
A single is six, two will be six forty-four, a family will be sixteen seventy-four.
The policy that I have is not that much, though it is less than that.
Where do you mean? I mean, I'm going by this sheet here, I think.
Yeah, but it's a little bit, it's, it's less because I just have health benefits, the vision and the dental, I don't have additional policy on that. Or Kim, Kim has the policy on that, there's not a policy for, um, the vision and dental and health insurance on the policy that I have. And some of the, some of the amounts change just a little bit because age, so with the different employees, but they change, or they each are a little bit different.
Keith, where are we going with this, sir?
Well, I just, I mean, we're an extra, if we go twenty-two hundred, that's an extra hundred and eighty-three dollars a month that we're gonna pay her out every month. Thirty-six hundred dollars is three hundred dollars more a month, and thirty-two fifty is roughly two seventy-eighty-three.
Like I said, I, I think, I think that's just wrong, but, you know, you have health insurance, you should be glad you have it. You know, why, why do you think you deserve to? Because our policy, anybody that reads that policy would not read into it that you can have two family policies, or you can have two policies. Does not read that way.
And I agree that the, the policy, the problem with the policy is it's just so vague, you can read anything into it if you want, you know what I mean, it just says health insurance.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's been that way forever, and it's always been, you know, hey, this, this is what it is, you know, anybody can make, um, anybody can look at anything and, and get their interpretation out of it, so.
Can I just interject once?
Yes.
A lot of companies and businesses will pay a stipend to employees that do not elect to take their health insurance as well.
Good.
And a lot, and a lot, and a lot of times, it's like ninety-two percent of, of what the policy is.
Yep, it could be a single plan, it just depends.
Yeah, but that would probably be like, would that also include married people, you know, one has insurance, one doesn't?
Anybody, anybody doesn't.
I guess that's-
Most companies aren't gonna stipulate that a married couple that are employed by the same company can't have each their own plan.
Many would be like, if somebody worked at Falkirk, and they bought a family plan, and then somebody works per se at the city and bought a family plan, it'd be, I mean, just because they work, you don't know, you know?
I understand that, but we're using taxpayer funds for this.
Well, the school, you can do a cash option with the school, and you get ninety-two percent of, if you take the cash, ninety-two percent.
Don't they just offer a single plan?
Just a single plan, you're right about that, but like, let's say some, the, the husband works at GRE, you know, they wouldn't have to lose their insurance completely if they didn't, or that money completely if they didn't take the insurance for the school, that was my point.
Well, yeah, but we're not discussing, you know, other, other people's employment places, you know, it's here, so. Any further discussion on this?
We got one right here.
I just had a point, and I guess you can take it for whatever it's worth. It seems to me that a governmental, kind of quasi-governmental entity discriminating between people based upon their marital status could be problematic. I didn't write that rule, but you don't, you, you should basically be treating every single person you can the same, is the way that I understand the law.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's not like we're refusing somebody insurance, they had insurance, they both had insurance.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So would you be saying that the motion that I just made would be discrimination, or just not letting them have anything would be discrimination?
I think that trying to treat people differently based upon whether they're single or married can cause problems. But I also think that if Joan is on board, and that, that you guys have worked out something that you believe is appropriate, so the city isn't doubling up on policies or what have you, if everybody believes that it's fair, then there's no problem there. I guess what, what I'm just trying to say is that that's, that's an issue, i- i- if you ever have it come up down the road, that you just need to be conscious of. I, I, I don't think that it's an issue as far as Joan is concerned, because it sounds like you guys have come to a resolution, but.
I guess if you say you want to be fair with everybody, then it should be, okay, we're gonna give everybody fifteen hundred dollars a month, use it however you want on your health insurance, you know, so. Use it however you want on your health insurance, you know, so. I mean, that would be fair and everybody gets the same, you know? Um, the thing is, there are differences, so. You know, it's like I said, it's a single and family, there are differences, you know? And if you give one person fifteen hundred dollars and one person-
Did you find out?
Six hundred dollars for insurance, you're not treating them fairly, so.
I give to mine.
Oh. So if it's, I guess, if it's not clearly defined that it's against policy to do that, then what is the problem? I think we need to fix that and pass that through and make sure that it's very clear. We can't hold folks accountable for what's very vague if we're not clear on it. I mean, we gotta fix this thing. How do we fix it? And then two, we're, we're approving the premiums on these, so, big picture, it rolls up. We approve those, those bills and those financials, so why didn't we catch it? So if we wanna fix that, I think that we very clearly state what can and can't happen, then we don't have to worry about it in the future. So why is it not clearly stated? That's the, that's the thing, so we need to fix that.
I think Mike has the out-of-pocket. Do you have the out-of-pocket now?
Twenty-two hundred for the Comp Choice one hundred.
And that's the one we're on?
I believe so, I haven't actually looked.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so the number would be twenty-two hundred.
So you have a discussion on this? Here we have a motion. Would you like to clarify that motion one more time since all this discussion was going on?
I move that we, um, accept the Comp Choice one hundred, um, for the employees, a family or, or single, depending on what, what they're at. And if there is a married couple, one of them would end up getting twenty-two hundred dollars in lieu of another policy.
Okay. And I think who's second and Reese's second?
And again, the twenty-two hundred is to make up for the out-of-pocket.
So is this something that rolls into the policy?
It'd be, it'd be-
Is that what we're voting on, to include that back in? Do we need to have a rough draft, draft version, make sure it's right?
I, I think, I think we need to approve, you know, the insurance plan first and then we need to change policy. If we're gonna change policy, I don't think we should do it both in the same motion.
Well, if we, if we mess with the policy before, with a policy plan before we have it stipulated, is that gray area?
If, if you're asking me, uh, I, I guess the commission can certainly do as it wishes. I, I don't know that there's any issue with choosing which policy plan would be offered to, uh, people who would give the policy. So that, that I don't have any policy. Have any, any comment on?
So next meeting we'll have that adjusted and we'll vote on that change? That's pretty important, cause that fixes it.
I think we can change it in this meeting.
Well, this, this hasn't passed yet, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know.
Mayor Thomas, can I say something quick? It, it might be beneficial to put, rather than a figure, in case the policy changes by fifty dollars or a hundred dollars for out-of-pocket maximum. You might just wanna put the out-of-pocket maximum rather than a figure.
You're talking about for policy.
Right, yeah. Cause if it changes by fifty dollars or a hundred dollars, I mean, moving forward, the next commission, ten years from now, might not know why the twenty-two hundred dollars was a figure in there.
Actually, you know, actually, you know, I think, if we're talking about, she has a single plan, why wouldn't we go with the single out-of-pocket then, that eleven hundred dollars? Cause that's what we're discussing, you know, take away a single plan.
Well, I said the twenty-two hundred because of the family out-of-pocket, cause they've got a family policy.
Okay, anyway, that's our motion.
That's the reason I did.
Okay, that's our motion, so, uh, Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Nay, I'm not comfortable.
Keith?
No.
Well.
Aye.
No. All right.
Okay, well, we're gonna need to do something with the insurance, cause it's up on July first.
I think we just need two separate motions.
I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, that we, uh, amend our personnel policy to state that, um, married couples have a choice of sharing one family plan or having two single plans. Where are your health insurance?
Wouldn't two single plans cost more than one family plan?
No, not even close.
Maybe we should ask the insurance agent.
Well, you pay for a, a full family plan anyway, so somebody, I mean, it's all about dollars and cents, right? Whatever saves the city the most money. So, I mean, two single plans is roughly six hundred, so twelve hundred and fifty dollars or whatever it is, two single plans. A family plan is sixteen something, so.
But why would we not get family benefits? Why would we have to take two single policies and not have our children covered?
Well, you can have a family plan.
Why, I thought in your motion it said two single plans.
No, I said, you either share a family plan or you can have two single plans. So whatever you prefer.
But one would still need dependents, so if we chose to go with two single plans, our children would be covered?
You would have to get one of them with dependents.
I just wanted to see if that was an option in your motion or not.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to say, um, one would be allowed to have, um, you know, single with dependents. Which whereas I think a family plan would come up better. Do we have a second for the sake of discussion?
Say it.
Okay, no discussion. Maybe we should, uh, go down to just offering everybody a single plan and then if you want family, you can pick it up from there.
I would disagree with doing that. I don't think that's-
I'm not saying I wanna do that, but.
Well, that's honestly, just saying that is kind of almost threatening.
Kind of block family.
It's kind of threatening, honestly.
But on the cause of everybody's-
Well, I don't know, I mean, the school has, everybody gets a single, so.
I know, but everybody getting a family now.
Yeah, and like I said, I think the city has some of the best benefits there are, so, so. Well, let's discuss, but, you know, it's, it was basically, my motion was, um, to amend the personnel policy to state that married couples can have a choice of a family plan or else a single plan and a, and a single dependent plan.
I guess I don't, I don't really have a problem with that motion. The insurance is still at least getting offered.
Anybody else?
I guess myself, it just kinda seems, you know, what's the sense of, I'm in a human resources committee. Cause we, we just spent time, um-
Well, we voted that one down.
So we're getting this figured out and in two minutes, we all switch our minds.
That's why we have discussions, you know, so. You have a discussion? Keith?
No.
Reese?
No.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say no.
I'm gonna say yes. Okay.
Okay, can we entertain a motion? Um, I'm gonna go in a little different direction here and we'll go back to the others if you want. Um, just so we can have insurance, I'll move that we go with the same policy that we've had in the past with the Comp Choice one hundred. And obviously, we're gonna have to go back and figure out the other portion of the single.
That is a fail.
So, that's my motion. So similar, same policy we've had before, simple motion.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay.
So then, this goes then for the entire next year or is it, can we modify it?
Goes July first through June.
Right, so the entire year? So, does that lock us in?
For one year, I mean, but we'll-
For-
You can switch plans anytime, like if you wanna switch to a different carrier. You would, maybe, you could switch September one if you wanted to, do a different carrier, you know, locked in.
Well, I, I think the question was if we, if we change our policy on, you know, who gets what policies, can we just like add or drop or whatever?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not a problem.
Yeah, but you can drop employees and, okay, if you hire a new employee, I mean, you gotta provide health insurance for them.
That's true.
Can't wait until July first.
So then obviously, if we change our policy by next month, then we can adjust it accordingly how our policy changes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not your health insurance agent, I'm just here for information.
No, I understand.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Kim.
Okay. The motion is to go with the Comp Choice one hundred plan. Any discussion, more discussion?
I know I did a lot of meetings with Mike for the school and that, and I just noticed between Sanford and Blue Cross and Blue Hill, really isn't a whole lot of difference price-wise and things like that, um, so.
All right, hello? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Well, yes.
Anybody wanna attack anything again?
Well, I guess you know where I stand, so.
I think the vet, the dollar value on that, I think you're too high. Uh, that might, I won't give it, I mean, that's-
Give us, give us one.
I don't wanna give you one, because I know what, what, uh, if we opt out of insurance at work, I know what we get. And it's nowhere near that, not even close. And I know my out-of-pocket is for a family is way more than that.
Well, this is something that doesn't have to be decided tonight, correct? This is something we could table and-
Well, the only thing is though, is if we don't decide tonight, we're gonna re-up our insurance and there's a possibility that we could, um, end up having another single policy.
You can take it off. But Mike said we could take it off at any time.
Oh, that's true.
So maybe we need to just-
How, how about this?
Think about things.
Um, I move that we do the eleven hundred dollars. And that's the out-of-pocket max for single.
I got one question, just, what is the average increase every year? Do you know that? I mean, like a-
Depends on the group, the healthiness of the group. You're on a grandfather plan, so they rate more on health history rather than age on the new plans.
So, okay, so this probably be for Joan or, do we share, do we know what our?
It's pretty healthy this year wasn't a Joan rate increase.
Our increases every year, like a ballpark average?
Uh, I, I don't have the, the percentage, I guess. I know there was one year where it was like ten dollars per, per, um, policy, another year it was a hundred. I mean, it's always been, compared to some of the other policies that you hear about where there's the increases because we have that grandfathered policy, we've always remained relatively steady and at pretty good rates.
So are we like ten percent, you're thinking? Does it increase ten percent every year, five percent?
No, no.
I think it increased ten percent this year, didn't it?
I have to go back and check. I don't wanna speak without knowing exactly.
I thought they were saying eight percent, but I could be wrong.
I thought it went up like a hundred sixty-four dollars.
So anyways, my motion is that, and this is a policy motion. In our policy manual for the, for the, um, employees, the second person in the married couple would get eleven hundred dollars and that's, that matches the out-of-pocket max per single. And obviously, the other employee would get the family.
Is there a second?
I'll second, just to discuss that.
Didn't you say, Mike, when I was talking to you the other day, that, uh, um, no, no other, if, since this is grandfathered in the way we have it set up now, if we switch plans, nobody else would have, would have, let you do a family and a single?
Yeah, they, I mean, if you're in the same group with the new ACA plans, you can only have one. If you're a family, even if the employee works there, the other employee, or the other spouse works there, you can't get two separate policies. That's a new thing moving forward, but you've got a grandfathered plan as well, so you can do that.
Yeah, well, I, I, I still think that, you know, she won't be allowed one, but, I mean, that's-
Since this would be a policy change, wouldn't there have to be two readings or no?
No.
Now, with this here, not like we, got spoken to us before about that, uh, okay, we already wanna say eleven hundred dollars out-of-pocket max, single. Now that's gonna go, how did you word that again, about going up every year, you know? You know, like you said, you know, with the increasing.
Yeah, it would be the, it would be the, um, eleven hundred is the out-of-pocket max for the single and it would stay at that out-of-pocket max. Whereas if it goes to a eleven hundred and twenty, it would go to eleven hundred and one.
How do we put a stipulation in there where?
If the-
It doesn't go no more, no more than a, like eight percent increase every year. I mean, if that goes up more than eight or ten percent, that, that goes in there. Do we put a stipulation in there that?
Let's do-
I don't know.
Can I, can I amend my motion?
Sure.
Or can you just erase the whole thing?
Yeah, why didn't you say you're, you're retracting your motion?
I'm retracting my motion and I'm gonna try to say this better. Okay, uh, I would like to have the second person in a family, in a married couple, get eleven hundred dollars and it was just a flat eleven hundred dollars. And then it's just gonna have to change, we're just gonna have to change it if we wanna change it, okay? Unless we switch plans, then it goes away. Cause if we switch plans and it's, and it's not allowed, well, if we switch plans and it's not allowed, we wouldn't have it. But until that point, as long as we keep this policy, it's allowed.
Why we just, you know, since no other, no other place allows it, why are we not just getting here any of it? You know, I guess that's my question.
I don't think that no other place allows it.
Well, he said, if, if, you know-
No, the new law says that.
Yeah, I know, that's what I mean.
Oh, but there's still a lot of places that still allow it. It's just that the new law doesn't allow it, Obamacare, that's not gonna be with us much longer either, so that might all change.
Now, you said it's the new law or it's the new, or it's what the, what the insurance companies are doing now?
They won't even quote what it is.
It's not a law, it's a policy.
Right, insurance. When they went to the ACA plan, they just not allow it.
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty much all, everybody, so.
But that's going to- But that's going out pretty soon, possibly.
I, you know, I can't speak for Blue Cross, but, I mean, a lot of these grandfathered plans are slowly going out the door.
Does the, does the school still, is the school on a grandfathered plan?
Yep.
Oh.
Okay, I'm confused again, you have to read that back to me.
Keith motioned that the second person in a family would receive eleven hundred dollars unless the state changes the plans.
Unless the plan is no longer grandfathered. And then there would be...
So how does that look each year? Do we have to adjust that by motion from this committee? Seems like it's complicated. If we had it stated that you can have a family kind of plan and a single plan, or one family plan per, that's policy, then we're not even talking about dollar amounts. I, I'd like to see HR or maybe packet this and send it out, 'cause I'm, I'm not comfortable making a decision for that change right now.
All right, just, just to be following the rules here, we do have a motion on the table. So, if nobody seconded it, it will die, but so I'm going to ask for a second.
Well, that's just for the policy change that the motion's on the table for. We will have insurance no matter what.
Yeah, the insurance is already taken care of.
Right, right, great.
So I'm gonna ask again for a second, unless you wanna rescind your motion. Okay, ask the third time for a second. And there is no second, then the motion dies for lack of a second. Now, Reese, would you say that again?
It just, if HR, the HR reps can kick out more information on that, we can revisit it at our next meeting.
But we need to have some direction because obviously, what we think isn't what we want.
We failed, we denied the motion to change policy verbiage, correct?
Yes.
So then what, I just, I think we keep things the same until we make that policy change. That's my, so that's my opinion.
So then you do, you do realize that she's gonna have another single policy until that happens?
Yeah, 'cause in the, in the handbook, from my perspective, she's afforded the right to insurance.
Have, have you read the handbook on that, or?
We talked about it last year.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, word for word, what it says, or...
Yeah, last year when we talked about this, it was pretty clear that she has...
Like about a thousand times.
Yeah, there's the...
Well, I know, but...
The option to get that, and we don't have it very clear that it has to be one or the other, and...
So we all realize that because we decided to throw that motion down, instead of spending a thousand dollars, we are gonna spend seven, eight thousand dollars.
I thought it was six hundred until the next meeting.
That might make sense, but...
Well, like I said, that's, I would like to get it done now.
Call it calendar year.
It, it, this doesn't go for a calendar year, we can change it whenever. Is what we, you know, he said. You don't have to, you don't have to go for a calendar year. If you change it next month, then it changes.
But at some point, it's probably gonna come down to either not allowing it at all, having a small, you know, amount that we allow it, or paying for a single policy. Those are our only three choices.
Basically. You know, I, I look at, uh, you know, there, there are people that, you know, are paying really, really, really high, um, insurances, you know? When insurance changed, there are, you know, some people I'm sure without insurance, you know? And then, you know, I, I just don't think it's right that we give two, you know, especially with all our other benefits that we're giving out.
But we're not responsible for all those people.
Yes, but they're taxpayers, but they're taxpayers. You know, they're the ones forking up the money for this.
Yes, and I realize that, and to be honest with you, you know, I wish my insurance was better too. But this is what they have right now, and we have to deal with it.
I hear what you're saying, that's why we need to figure something out here.
Can this be an agenda item next month, or at our next meeting?
Can be.
But what's going to, what's going to change?
Exactly.
What are your thoughts, Reese? You gotta have something on your mind.
I plainly stated need more information to feel comfortable with making that decision. I guess I'm not. That's it?
Okay, we'll table it till next meeting for that policy.
I will be gone, just gonna stay for the calendar, so.
Uh, maybe, when is that?
The tenth, July tenth, July tenth. Yes, I won't miss that meeting.
I would be gone as well, I would prefer to be here for it.
And I guess my question too is, I mean, I realize that this is gonna be the commission's decision ultimately, but I guess, Joan, did you wanna say anything on, on the subject, or I think you have the right to, to say something too?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I've stayed quite a few times that I was not, am not, um, trying to take something that I don't believe I'm afforded under the employee handbook. I think, um...
I mean, like, do you have like a preference or anything that...
Well, the preference was what we negotiated.
Um, I just, you know, um, the city does have very good benefits. And, um, again, I'm not trying to take more than my share. I'm just trying to, um, I guess I'm just standing up for myself a little bit and saying that I, you know, um, think I should be afforded the same employee benefits as everybody else. Didn't have the foresight that it was gonna come down to my job or health insurance.
Truly.
But, um, you know, I appreciate the conversation. I, as, you know, while as I had said to you before, um, I'm more than willing to try to find some common ground and to move forward. I, I need this to stop, so.
So you said you're gonna be gone?
Pardon me?
You said you're gonna be gone for a health reason or something?
Yep, I emailed the commission on Friday, I emailed all of you.
I haven't checked my emails since last week, so. Like, how long are you gonna be gone? For what time, or one, two months, three months?
Um...
Two weeks?
Um, I've...
You know, 'cause you said you, you're gonna be gone for medical reasons on the next meeting.
Yep, I'm scheduled out for a month.
Okay, month, okay.
Mike, one minute. Yeah, just a quick question. How do you guys budget your employee benefits? I mean, year to year going into, obviously, insurance renewal, you know, you've got the debt, the vision, and Afleck, I think, is paid by employees, but, I mean...
It just gets budgeted out in the budget, this is, you know, once it's decided what it is in July, it's budgeted out for next year in the budget, so.
What do you use for an increase for health insurance?
Well, we generally know what it is before we use the budget, so, you know, we don't...
But when is the budget, what, what time of year is the...
September.
September. So you use the current number for that next July renewal?
Well, we would use this number, you know, I suppose for the whole year, and then...
And I think usually they, you guys add a, whatever, certain percentage, five to eight percent or something like that?
Just curious, I guess, I, you know, it's hard nowadays with health insurance because one year you could get a point six percent rate increase, and the next year you could have, you know, some bad medical things going on within a group, and it could go up twenty-two percent. And then you're kinda walking into June like, or, you know, April or May, I guess I should say, like, you know? So, just a suggestion that, you know, maybe moving forward, something to look at is a specific dollar amount that you spend on employee benefits. So that way you can, you know, put a five percent increase on that number, and you kinda know what to budget here and you're out. And you're not always kinda grabbing at straws like, where are we gonna be, you know?
Rick, we used to try and find out approximately what Blue Cross Blue Shield was gonna go up. And if they said, well, like, well, from eight to twelve percent, we would add twelve percent to that budget so that...
I think Joan does that.
Yeah. And you hope you're lucky enough to, otherwise you're in your red.
Well, for a half a year, right, when it, you know, cover up the half year, right?
So where were we?
Well, we decided to table it and then, but then Noel said she wasn't gonna be there, Joan's not gonna be there. The thing is, if there's gonna be talks on this, I mean, I, I think that the rest of the commission needs to, you know, know a little more about this rather than coming to a meeting and, and you go, hey, this is what we said, you know? That's probably part of our problem for...
So, but the only thing is though, is the next time though, then we don't need to waste our time in the committee? You know?
I'm sorry?
Then, the next time, we, we don't need to waste our time in the committee. Because we're in a committee trying to figure this out, 'cause we were asked to do this. Well, if we're gonna make a decision as a group and get all the information as a group, we don't need to come up with any committee work to figure out what recommendations we need. Usually you have a recommendation, you kinda work around that recommendation a little bit, but we've kinda thrown the recommendation completely out.
Well, you know, there was a recommendation.
You know, 'cause we started at twenty-three and went down to eleven hundred.
Actually, I was, it was discussed thirty-six, twenty on Friday, or Thursday, discussed thirty-six, which is half of a single policy about...
But anyway, you know, so anyway, it's tabled.
All right.
Yes.
Can I, I wanna say something just to maybe put it in perspective. I understand where you guys are going for the future with not, not wanting to pay that large amount to somebody for the plan. But you have an employee who has been here a long time, has done her job, has worked really hard. You're basically taking money out of the pocket by taking her plan away? Don't you feel that you should compensate her for that? I, I think some of you do, but then I feel some of you are saying it's too much, it's too much money. But you're actually taking her combined salary with that benefit? You're taking some of it away. That's kind of an insult to anybody. It, it, it really is.
Well, and I guess in defense, we didn't, because we're tabling it.
Right, I know, I understand that.
The discussion...
But do you see what I'm saying? For, for an employee who's been here, I understand for the future. And I, I completely understand the wanting to keep the number down for our taxpayers, I understand that part. But right now, you're dealing with a current employee, and you're gonna take that money away from her, or him, whoever the employee is. It, it really is a slap in the face. And as a citizen of Washburn, I would be ashamed.
Yeah, but I, I think the message is we didn't, you know, through the session.
Right, no, I understand, I'm just saying, keep that in mind when you're thinking about what you're doing. You know, maybe you need to change the policy for the future, but maybe there needs to be a little exception for what's happening now. Maybe you need to work on a policy for the future employees, rather than taking away now from somebody who's been here and has worked hard.
Okay, thank you. Two thousand sixteen audit?
Um, Malon, it'd be hard to set the contract for the, to, to schedule the two thousand sixteen audit?
I really wonder if we shouldn't, um, get bids on this. If it's like, what, eleven thousand dollars or something? Um, also, one of the, one of the issues I have with these people is, um, you know, we paid next year with a forty-seven hundred dollars last year for things that were done. And I asked Joan to, um, ask them for a more detailed listing or, you know, itemization of what they actually did and, you know, hours and stuff like that. And Joan informed me that they wouldn't give it to us. So this is all we're gonna get from our...
I, I sent you a copy to you now.
Yeah, so, um, and I, I just think if somebody, you know, if they're auditing, they're an audit firm and they're not gonna give you an itemized...
'Cause they do our bonds too.
Yeah, that's, that's not good.
They, they don't do our bonds, but they do, they do our federal audits, file on that.
Okay.
So I think maybe we should ask for some bids on... Discussion, do you mean?
So we don't bid out that each time, we're just go...
Um, we had a, we had a different firm that we could use for a number of years when Melissa was the auditor. And Dwight Havelwit was still doing the books. They used a different firm, I don't remember the name. Um, and then, for whatever reason, they weren't pleased with exactly how it was going, or I, I don't exactly know. Um, they would then, Dwight recommended Malon with her. And they have been very good for this, the city, they're very easy to work with. They, um, you know, they work well with us, but if you would like to see how much other things, you know, other accounting firms cost, we can certainly get some different quotes.
Well, I think we should, I mean, it doesn't have to be done immediately tonight, so.
What do we have, a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that we get bids on, uh, for the two thousand sixteen audit. Right, two thousand, yeah, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hi, Reese.
Hi.
Kid? Well...
Hi.
Burn ban, no, I think that's yours.
The county has, um, adopted a, I guess it's B more actually, burn restrictions. But since Washburn lies within Plain County, so there are no, um, the, the burn ban goes with fire index. When the fire index is in the low, moderate, or high, it's okay to burn, have fireworks, all that. When it's in the very high extreme, or of course, a red flag, it'd be unlawful.
And I believe you can find out the index on the county's website, correct?
Yep, or go to N D D E S.
I think right now it's on low.
Yep, it's low today, and yes, it changes daily, so you have to check it daily.
So I've actually went there, I think, it also gets changed every day on the little sign outside of town, right? Or not?
Um, it just depends on some changes or not, so.
Wasn't the kind of the, um, major thing about this burn ban being brought up more in the city, you know, that you were concerned about more sharing? What do you call it?
According to, um, being that we are a home world charter city, we can make our own decisions. Uh, and that's why we were just wondering if you wanted to follow the county like we normally do, or what you guys wanted to do?
Yeah, I got the same question.
You can go more restrictive, but not less restrictive. So if you want to go where there's no burning in the high category, you could do that, but you can't go less restrictive, so. Does that make sense?
I think we just stick with them. Okay? Itenurant license?
Um, an iterative license. There's a gentleman from Pete's Books that has requested, um, a door-to-door salesperson license. He has provided his, copy of his bond, um, and then has paid the appropriate fees.
His books, what's that, encyclopedia dealing?
Um, do you know what type of...
It was like school books, education books.
Sometimes, I had one come once, it was ACT, SAT books, um, sometimes it's encyclopedias.
I just said at my house, if anyone's...
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
So we have to approve this, or what?
Correct.
Does it say from when to when, or?
Um, valid dates of use from six twenty-one seventeen to eight thirty-one seventeen.
Oh.
I move that we approve the license for Peter King.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
That's two months. Two months?
One.
Yep. Is that something that you ladies could put on the county or the city?
Very helpful.
City, city website, just let people know on Facebook and stuff?
Yeah.
Keith?
Hi.
Please.
Hey.
Good?
Alright.
Noah?
Hi.
Yes. Sidewalks.
You'll be up there, Larry?
Sure.
Okay, um, just real quick, sidewalk project is ongoing right now, I'm sure a lot of you guys have seen the, uh, stuff getting taken out, the forms being put up, but a couple of things, sidewalk project I get is a, it's been a three-year ongoing thing. We're trying to get this project, uh, going, finally, so we have. Um, a few things have come up since we have had the initial, uh, project plan put out and the quantities and what was bid on by the contractor to do the sidewalk work. Um, and the two that we have on there is Chase Drug and Kayla Sweeney. Um, I believe that home was owned by, was that Peterson's?
Kathy Peterson.
Prior to that, and that's what I had on my notes. Um, but first Chase Drug, that wasn't on the sidewalk project to begin with. Um, I measured it out today, it's about four hundred and twenty-five square feet, so, um, what I just wanted to bring up to you guys, make sure that was something that would be okay to be adding to that sidewalk project.
Did somebody call them, do you know?
Yeah.
Somebody called Chase Drug to confirm?
I have not.
He, from, from, when I, my conversation with Mr. Chase, uh, last fall was that he didn't want to participate in the sidewalk.
I know, but I, I thought they had been told after that that it wasn't gonna happen, so I, remember I talked the other day, I said, you know, we need to confirm that, that they still wanna do it for sure?
And that's, that's what, uh, I'll, I'll have to give him another caller, but, uh.
I thought we called, they almost sent a message.
What's that?
I thought we had called, but I'm not sure if we were able to reach them.
Okay, I'll, I'll check, double check on it, Larry.
Okay.
But, uh, that, that was, uh, the four hundred and twenty-five square feet. Now, I know, um, the city had a fifty-fifty match with the property owner of who was doing the sidewalk work. And that was another question, if that was something that the city would honor for them as well, for this extra work?
I'll, I'll do that one where, um, I'll move that if they do it, we would allow them the fifty-fifty match.
Okay, now, that, would that be for just Chase Drug, or would that be for, um, the other ones that we have also?
The other ones, Kayla Sweeney?
Kayla Sweeney is on there, and, and also on the list is, uh, is Morris Nelson, and he has, he had two property fronts. One was on the north side of Fourth Avenue, and one's on the south side of Fourth Avenue. South side of Fourth Avenue along Seventh Street, right by the CPA office, that actually wasn't on that initial project plan and quantity, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, my motion, I'll say I move for all three of those, because they, all three, I think, or at least two of them filled out the forms already for it. So I, I move that Chase Drug, Kayla Sweeney, and Morris Nelson, if they're going to do it, we do the fifty-fifty match.
You have a second? I'm sorry, what?
Isn't that sidewalk already getting done by Sweeney's place?
It's for an additional portion of sidewalk, but is it twenty feet?
Uh, it's, I, I didn't actually measure that out, but initially it was thirty-eight feet long, and it's, it's, I would say it's probably won't double that.
It was actually kind of a mess up, because we walked through it and it was supposed to be replaced, and then somehow it got, between Jasper and everybody, it got kind of missed. But it was, it was supposed to be done before, and somehow it got missed along the way, so.
And there's also been a lot of construction, since they're remodeling, redoing that whole house, so I think a lot of that, if it was already in bad shape, it was even in worse shape, simply absurd construction.
I'll second that, just so we can move on here, but what about Morris now, is that the twenty feet, or is it the whole area there?
So Morris Nelson has, uh, initially on the project, um, if I can find it here, Nelson Mike, that's not through, Morris Nelson, uh, was seventy-six feet, and that, from what I have, that was on the north side of Fourth Avenue along Seventh Street. Uh, the other, the piece that I measured out was eighty feet long on the south side of Fourth Avenue. Um, goes on the same side of Seventh Street, but, you know, that, it's four and a half foot wide, so it comes up to three hundred and sixty extra square feet.
It, it goes from his sidewalk to the.
To the CPA firm, yeah, and then, um, and on that, both Kayla, Sweeney, and Morris Nelson are in favor of doing it. They are.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they are both.
Morris wanted the whole thing instead of just the twenty, okay, good, perfect, that's my question.
And Chase, Chase Drug's the one that we're waiting for.
Okay, very good, very good. Any other discussion on that? Keith?
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Alright.
Noah?
Hi.
Yes. Okay. Um, you have something else there for us, Eric?
Um, if you want me to continue into the, uh, engineering update, um, we've had quite a bit going on, quite a bit of little things, I should say, that have been going on lately. Uh, but the, uh, twenty sixteen and the twenty-fourteenth street utility projects, we've been doing warranty work there. Um, there's still nine items remaining to be fixed on the twenty sixteen street project. Um, I, I believe I emailed the, the current list out to all the commissioners, if you guys haven't gotten that, I can get some copies to Joan, where you can maybe stop in and grab them. Um, but it has everything on there that we still need to get fixed. Um, one item particularly that I want to address is the, um, in the ditch there by the, on Sixth Street by the railroad tracks, there, there's two pipes that cross that, that drain that ditch out, uh, down, down along the railroad tracks.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, there was quite a bit of erosion off the end of the road there, uh, just 'cause it is a steep.
Okay, real quick, does everybody know where this is?
Yeah.
Cause.
So railroad tracks and Sixth Street.
It would be like
One block from here.
That side from the, on the, or east of the elevator, and then where it crosses the tracks.
So.
Or west, I'm sorry, west.
Yeah, and we repaved Sixth Street, but off the end of the road, it, it goes down pretty quickly into the bottom of the ditch, and that, from the couple of rains we've had, it eroded it pretty badly. Um, Wagner does have to dress it up and fix it, but, uh, one thing that we did propose was to have them go ahead and dress it up and, and prep it for pouring concrete. Now, the concrete would be something that would be extra cost, if we wanted them to go ahead and put the concrete in, it would eliminate the erosion problems. Yes, they could fix it under warranty and put an erosion control mat and seat it again, but most likely it probably eroded again. So, um, my recommendation would be to, uh, have them go ahead and do their work to fix it, and in that work, I'd have them prep everything, and if we could have, uh, the concrete contractor that's in town do that.
Do you have an estimate on that?
Uh, it was, it was about four thousand dollars for the square footage, uh, for all the concrete, and that's based off of the, um, the square footage price for the sidewalk. Um, so that, that's something that I can, um, revisit with them, but that was the estimate at the time, so.
I guess how, you know, I guess what I need to know is how long they're gonna be around, because we didn't have another meeting till.
Correct, uh, the, um, contractor will be working through Friday, then I believe they're gonna be, uh, because they're out of Montana, they're gonna be going back home for Fourth of July weekend, they'll be coming back after that. So, um, I think we would have time until, uh, they would still be here by the time the next meeting is, July tenth, I, I think you said earlier.
Right.
So I, I think we'd be okay there if we waited until then, um, but, uh, it's, like I say, it's one.
And, and you don't actually know if that's the price, you just?
I don't know if that's the actual price, the only thing that I did was I visited with the contractor to say that at the minimum, they need to fix the erosion problem and put the mat back up and reseat it. But we had talked about maybe putting concrete in there, so the price that I got was the subcontractor's, uh, price off of the square footage price for the sidewalk. So he said, yep, I could get my sub to come in here to put in the concrete at that price, so. And I think I did, um, I do have the whole area to be, I had it down here somewhere, but it's, it, it came out to about four thousand dollars for to, for concrete costs.
So do we wanna wait on that until we give an exact figure, I would say, or what do you think?
Well, we can do it up to certain amounts, like, cause I think it needs to be done, obviously.
It was four hundred and fifty square feet of concrete that we need to work.
That's always been a bad drainage area forever. What'd you say, four hundred and fifty square feet?
Four hundred and fifty square feet.
So Quam's gonna fix it all up and do it, or Wagner, I mean, they're gonna form it and do it all that?
Wagner, their requirement under the warranty work is to take all the debris, rocks, silt out of there and reseat it, put the erosion control mat back. So in that work, I would have them just prep it for V W concrete to come in, and so they would, they would do the forms and stuff and set it up. So we'd just be paying for the concrete square footage price.
In, in other words, they wouldn't be putting black dirt and grass seed or nothing like that.
Correct, they would be all concrete. It includes that whole soap.
It's like four thousand dollars, a lot of money, just come in there, pour a slab of concrete, and they don't have to form it or nothing.
Uh, we were gonna do eight thousand for that. Yeah, that's a lot of money, but I think that's.
Fix it, be done.
That's concrete price though, right? I mean, that's, concrete ain't cheap.
That's, that's the going rate or their quote that they have.
So the motions, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid of four thousand dollars for the concrete work of the four hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, that's an estimate, not a deal.
Up to six thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Keith?
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Good?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions, so before you move on.
Sure.
Um, and we talked about this last meeting, about, I see the, the, uh, patching looks real good everywhere in front of Getroses and Sheldon's, but I wanna make sure that the curb is going to be done in those areas?
Correct, and that, I was gonna address those ones as well, so. Um, so I'll move on to other concrete work, so I am tracking, we had the water main repair, um, on Fourth Avenue, that was, uh, Sheldon's, and then also the sewer main that backed, or the sewer service that backed up on Meadowbrook, that was Getros'. So we had those patches done, um, I'm working with that same contractor, but this, this extra concrete work would be when they come back after the Fourth of July. They're trying to focus on what Wagner has them doing for subcontract work, so, um, I'm tracking that curb on those two places, and also I, I need to get with them on the captain's cabin, um, Highway eighty-three.
Tunnel.
Pedestrian tunnel, yep, so I gotta get a bid from them on that. I know we had a bid with another contractor at one point, the city was working directly with them, and, uh, from the information I have now, they're not, not showing up to do that.
At Giovanni?
Giovanni, correct.
I've called him a couple times, and I haven't got a call back.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what's going on there, but, um, I figured in the best interest of the city, I'll go ahead and try to see if we can get a quote from the subcontractor that's in town now, so we can get the work done.
I can interject real quick here, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, cancel our contract with G U I, put that down right there.
Hold on a second.
Any discussion on that? Keith?
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Alright.
Hi.
Yes, that way they can show up and go, oh. Very good.
So that was the other con, uh, concrete work that I have on here. Um, other concrete work that is under warranty though, is there's a few spots where curb needs to be fixed on both the twenty fourteen project and the twenty sixteen project. Those are on that, those sheets that I sent out to you.
And what's the location, uh, what's the issue there by that bike building that's getting fixed up there, the old, the, right across from the cafe? As you're going towards the alley there, there's some exed out areas that need to be replaced?
That's part, that's, that's more warranty work, that we had cracked sidewalk or driveways that they have to cut out and fix. And from what I know from Wagner is they hired V W concrete to do that work, and, um, that's gonna be something they're, they're gonna be here a while, because they're, they got that stuff they gotta do too, so. You're playing to your question, Larry, are they gonna be back in here to do this, I don't see how they couldn't be, because they got a lot of work to do, so. It just takes time for all those little warranty items. So, um, the next thing I wanted to cover was the patching project, and I'm sure all of you have seen that, it did go very well, uh, from everything that I've seen, um, Darren from Quality Asphalt, they've, they've done a great job from everything I've seen. Um, then to go on to the next subject right away would be the Seal Coat project, which is what we wanted to get done right after the, the patchwork got done. Um, I did talk to Dale Strandberg today, he's the guy, the VP out there for Aztec Corporation. Um, they're gonna be hoping to get out here by the end of July. He said it could be sooner, but he'll call me and let me know, so I'll let you guys know as soon as I find out anything different, but right now I'm applying for the end of July.
For the end of July, no?
The end of July, no, yep, because they're out in, they have one crew out in Minnesota, another one that's, you know, west, Watford City, Williston, so.
Okay.
But I'll let you know if I find out anything else on that. Address the sidewalk project, um, last thing I wanted to cover was the intake project. So right now, we have a bath metric survey, uh, that's tentatively planned for Wednesday, so we'll be out on the river with a boat and survey equipment to get, to get all that, uh, survey data, uh, to continue going on this intake project. Um, so if anything changes in that, I'll let you guys know, because I know, uh, some of you had been asking on when they would be out there doing that. But, uh, as of right now, it's gonna be Wednesday.
Yeah, Todd definitely called me on that.
Todd called you?
Yeah.
Great. Um, and then besides that, we are working on the environmental assessment, survey, and solicitations to, um, all the organizations that need to, we wanna get comments back from them to make sure that we're gonna be okay on the three sites that we're looking at for, for options for the new intake. And, and all that plays into the site selection memorandum that we're gonna produce to, and that we need to kind of get more information so we can give you our best recommendation on which site we wanna go with. With the three sites, uh, I, I think everyone's aware, but the, the one is where the current intake is, the other one, site two, is, is gonna be directly across the river from that, on the west side. Um, just on the south side of the bridge, and then the third, site three is, is, uh, just north of, uh, the site one, so about quarter mile, quarter to a half mile.
It'd be past Van, past Van Horns.
Past Van Horns, yep, so.
And what do you think you're gonna have that estimate, or, or the more data on that one, except for the next meeting, or?
Um, we'll see how the bath metric survey goes, as long as it goes through here on Wednesday. Um, I will have some new stuff to report on July tenth for sure, um, but that memorandum, I, I don't know that we'll have that ready to go yet on July tenth. But as soon as we can, we will, we will, so. That's all I have pending your questions.
What did you find on Fourteenth Street?
On Fourteenth Street for the patching?
That, yeah.
Uh, we, it, there was, we, we had it ground up and, and everything seemed to be okay for the base.
Yeah.
So we have it, uh, everything put back in and.
So did they dig up some of that basement packet or anything, or?
It was actually milled off the top, and everything looked fine from there, so they, they put the patch back in, and then it seems to be really good, so. There was nothing, there was no evidence of, of, uh.
Failure.
Real bad failure, correct, yep, so that should be good there, and then it's gonna be milled, or not, it's gonna be, uh, seal coated over it too, so.
Right.
And so it should be good, it's gonna be all sealed up. Same thing goes with all the patches, obviously, but that drainage issue by Getz Funeral Home, that, like I say, that, I was really impressed how they handled that and everything.
Oh.
Everything should, I mean, time will tell when we get a next rain, but everything should drain out of there very well. Really, one of the bad spots was, was that not, not, uh, Getz's driveway, but the next one down the hill from there was kind of blocking a lot of the flow. So he got that completely milled out of there, it shouldn't flow real nicely.
That's one, good deal.
Picture.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Um, trucks on Fourteenth Street, East First Avenue, I was thinking that, you know, was a meeting or two ago, you know, somebody's planning, they're driving semis down, we should put no trucks signs up there.
I did talk to the owner of the company, she said when she's driving, when she comes around that street, she's completely empty.
But still.
She says she's aware of it, but that was the conversation that was had with her.
You know, it's so narrow, and then I know she's driving off the pavement where there's not an approach, I'm sure, which I, I think we should put no trucks there, no truck signs, you know, probably start at, uh, you know, Main and Fourteenth, and then go down to, what, Fifteenth Street, and then right past the tracks, you know, so they can get into, um,
Into the.
GM cost area there, and then put no trucks there. And I, I mean, I think we can just do that, yeah, we, I mean, I'm pretty sure, I think in the past, Ray, we can do that, just do that, right?
Right. He had a question for you.
What?
Are you losing interest in us? He's, he's got a question for you.
Well.
Well, we were talking about, like, putting a no trucks on some streets, no truck signs, we can just do that, right, without a, without a, like, resolution or anything, right? I think so.
But you have anything in, do we have anything in ordinances? I didn't see that. I mean, I think you can make.
That's a good question, we didn't even know where it's.
You can make a motion right here that certain streets, there'll be no truck, no truck traffic, and then you've got.
Yeah, then we got it, right?
But ask, ask a gentleman here, maybe we can get some free information.
I don't know your city code, but I'm assuming that that's accurate. I don't know your city code, but I'm assuming that that's accurate.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, no truck, uh, Fourteenth Street, you know, south Fourteenth Street, south the main, and then south fifteen, south the main, and, and it would also include at least Fourteenth Avenue.
Now, are we going to run into trouble, I'm just being devil's advocate here, where she's not able to drive in, so then she starts parking in front of Ray's house?
We'll deal with that later.
You know what I mean?
I'll let all air out of these tires, you only parked there one night.
You know what I mean, you know, I'm fine with this, it's just so we don't create another problem where then.
I, I, I really think so, but I guess if it does, we'll deal with it.
Have, have we talked to that individual about the?
Yeah.
Joan.
Oh.
I, I did, I had a very, very good conversation with her, she said, you know, she's well, she's aware of the, um, the load limits, and, um, you know, she never traveled that road when she was, when she was full, and.
You know, it, it's kinda like Renter Edition when, you know, Jaggers used to park a lot of their trucks up there, you know, but they were always empty, but still, you know, it, it's not good for the roads, so. And then, and they were really good about it when, when the city laid back land, so. So we have a motion, do we have a second? Or did somebody second? Did somebody second that, Joan?
I don't, I don't have a second yet. I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Good?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, so we'll have, uh, it'll be just the no truck symbol, the owner's share, whoever talks to the voice, you know, just the no truck symbol, and then they can put those up, so. Done with that, portfolios?
Okay.
Talk fast, it's getting late.
Okay, I got, uh, one thing, uh, Dave, Dave Gal is up on Fourth Avenue, I believe, in the old Chase House overlooking. Anyway, he's been having issues with his sewer, um, he's had people come up and clean it out, and finally, this, we, he had the city come out and blow it out. But it's a continual problem because of, obviously, you know, the pipes, and also I guess it's not correct at the right angle. He, all of his pipes are new, you know, from the, everything from the curb stop in, or all that is new, so the issue's out in the street. So the point being is, is we're gonna keep an eye on it, and he's going to camera it here in about six months again, take a look at it, and we're just gonna keep an eye on it, but there's a chance that there might be an issue with the city sewer in that area, so just so everybody's aware of it, you know, for future reference. I just wanted to let everybody know that there's been some issues up there, and.
Oh, are you done?
Yeah.
Oh, um, so, um, did you talk with Brian after they cameraed it then, or?
Yeah, I talked to Brian.
Okay, and he, and he thought, cause he was, I thought he was gonna get back to me if there was issues, and he never did, so.
Well, if, if, it's continually clogged up, I guess, out there, and they finally blew it out completely, and hopefully it solves the problem, you know? But if, if it doesn't, then we might have to go to Plan B, you know? But I just wanted to make everybody aware that there has been an issue up there, and he put all new plumbing, all new, uh, sewer in himself, uh, into the house, so, yeah.
What's the name and address of that again?
Uh, Dave McAl, Fourth Avenue, very top corner.
You know, that's one of the streets that's gonna get checked.
On Fifth Avenue.
Yeah. But hopefully everything's taken care of, but just so everybody's aware. So no action needs to be taken, you know, but there is a little issue up there.
Yep, let's see.
Please.
Airport Authority, we had a good meeting here, uh, in June, we're gonna set quarterly meetings for the last Wednesday of the mid-quarter month going forward, and same with, uh, library board. It'll be the last Tuesday of the mid-quarter month, so those will be set up on, uh, the website for the city. And then buildings and grounds, um, as far as in-town city buildings, we just had a group get together and we brainstormed on a few items that need addressing at each building, and potentially getting some things on the budget for two thousand and eighteen, so. That's it.
Major stuff, or?
No, uh, gutters, old fire hall, maybe some gutters, for example, uh, AC and, uh, building here, rest of the LED lights on this building, stuff like that. Heat exchangers in the memorial hall, we're gonna take a look at that, and maybe start switching a few of them out each year, so.
They've been there a while, yeah.
That was good, that was good, uh, good month of meetings.
Okay, find anything else out about the museum building, or?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna end contract with Prairie Carpet Services, and then we're going to take some pictures and rebid the, uh, roof, the paint, and then the windows. Try to separate them and see if we can't get focused approach on each item.
Okay, cool, excellent. Is that it?
Yep.
Good?
Nothing.
Oh.
Nothing.
Um, I guess we got some bids here, right, for the lagoon, cleaning out the lagoon. Let's see those real quick. This is that ditch, you know, it's prob- apparently approximately four hundred and forty feet, um, so A and C Land Company is eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, Butler Excavating is, um. Hey, wow, six dollars a foot, that's twenty-seven hundred dollars. And they actually figured an extra ten feet just in case, you know, we're cleaning out the saples. Um. Unlimited excavating. Uh, they're four hundred and forty feet, uh, twenty-nine, uh, or, yeah, twenty-nine hundred ninety dollars, two, nine, nine oh. And then Dirty Deeds. Uh, Dirty Deeds. Twenty-one hundred sixty dollars.
Did you say eight hundred and seventy-five for the person?
Yeah, let me go.
Is there a one in there?
Yeah, clean out a ditch to approximately four hundred and forty feet and pile on the side, yeah, uh, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So the pile on the side, does that?
That, that's what we do, we just dig it up and then just pile it, I mean, you know.
So every, every bid would have that done?
Yes, well, let's, let's make sure, yeah.
Zip someone haul it away? You mean haul it away, or just pile it?
You know what, yeah, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll load a ditch, yeah, um. You know Brian talked to most of the, yeah, they are, so I'll make, I'll make the motion that we, uh, we accept the ANC Land Company bid for eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And then obviously, no one's going to want to, but we wanna make sure they realize that no materials are brought back into town, you know, whether it's dirt or anything else. Um, I'll second that.
Okay, um, any discussion? Keith?
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Good?
Hi.
No?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I have nothing else. Joan?
Um, just, there's, uh, we had two people resign from the Self-Loosened Patch Committee.
Oh, well.
And from the civet club, and civet club has, um, voted and appointed Mike Nelson, insurance, information insurance, and Kevin Kirky from the Intervene Center. Will serve on those committees.
Okay. Now, two, two people resigned, that was Carla and?
And, um, Claudia.
Oh. And then you said it's, uh, Mike.
Mike Nelson, insurance, and Kevin Kirky from the Intervene Center. Or State of North Dakota.
We have a motion to accept those.
I move to accept. I'll second that.
Keith?
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
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 Okay. Anyway. Okay, more than maybe else?
I have not looked at that.
Okay, we'll have to take a minute. This coffee rack is over there. You be paving, is that tar?
Mm-hmm. Do you have a safe spot? Oh, I was gonna say, I was keeping this up.
Yeah. And then, uh, what was that other one? There was Hogan's Drain, I know where that one was, that other one was Roto-Rooter, where was that at?
Is there an address on it?
I believe that's up in Pecano, it's also.
Those, where at?
Up in Pecano.
The Gills, yeah, probably.
Oh, they were both?
Yeah. Brian, that's right, Brian could call Roto-Rooter for that, Hogan went out as far as he could, and then he did, and then he marked it.
Pay bills.
Okay, have a second.
Second that. Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Good?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes. Any other?